Good afternoon, commissioners. You're here for the workshop on the Housing Component of the Comprehensive Plan?
Record on form. So does this get recorded and then put on our YouTube channel?
It's streamed live.
But after it's streamed live, there's no...
Oh, it's on there, yeah. You have to click on the live tab and you'll see it.
There's just no, they don't, YouTube doesn't...
Hi, Swati!
They're not very good at dates or categories or anything, so they're all just kind of randomly there. But it's under Bonner County Plan.
And they're on, but we changed the date.
So it will be Bonner County Comprehensive Plan Housing Update.
No, it's just Bonner County, Bonner County Commissioners Workshop, and then July 6th, July 1st.
Then we keep a, we keep a running list of whenever you guys meet on things. That's the, it's in my board update, it has all the dates listed.
We're going to talk about this later.
I can tell it's very controversial by the crowd.
Please continue, Ms. Restogu.
You go ahead, Swati, continue.
So as we can see, the planning commission recommended and recommended this update on June 6th in their planning commission hearing. Since then, since then, we have worked on this component to give you. It includes all of these, as you see here in the contents page. Occupancy, vacancy, then your total housing units, all of these things. And they were, most of the research for this component came from the US Census or American Community Survey data, all from other sources. So we look at some of the highlights of this component. It has a lot of figures and tables that you can refer to. So about half of the bulk of this component is in the appendix, which is all tables that have resulted in those graphs in your graph of this component. Just a quick introduction, the state code requires that the housing component had analysis of housing conditions and needs, plans for improvements of housing standards, and plans for the provision of safe sanitary and adequate housing, including the provision of convention housing, recycling manufactured housing in mobile homes and subdivisions, and parks, and on individual lots, which are sufficient to maintain competitive market for each of those housing types and to address the needs of the community. A lot of this text in the state code doesn't really apply to what we have in Bonner County since we don't have building codes, which would refer to, which would make the case for provision of safe sanitary or adequate housing. What we do care about is the quantity of housing in Bonner County. Not so much about the quality of housing because we can't regulate it. So the first graph here is some data that was taken from the assessors' office. It shows the percentage of housing of the parcels, total number of parcels in Bonner County that are, that have either existing residential development or potential, or having a residential improvement. And it compares, meets that comparison all across all the geographical areas that we have here, all cities, and comparing it with Bonner County. So on your left here, there is the percentage of total stock of lots, parcels with existing or potential residential improvements in corresponding geographic area. And on the right, you have the total number of lots and parcels in number.
On this particular graph, on this table, Swati, it's kind of interesting when I'm looking at the red dot that references the total number of lots, parcels with existing or for potential residential improvements. Why is it that it appears that the overwhelming majority of Clarkport Dover, East Hope, Kootenay, Old Town, Ponduree are essentially at zero percent? So is that...
It's not zero, it's like so low that it doesn't...
It does, okay. Within, within the confines of the table.
Right. I can go to the, if you want, I can, we can look at the...
Thank you. That's good enough, part of the interruption, we'll go through. I like data, but this is an update. If, if the two of us can actually be civil enough to understand this, we'll try. I'll do my best.
There is a number there, but it's just so small that it doesn't show up on the graph as a...
It's statistically insignificant in reference to the measure that, to the data that we're using.
Quickly move over to the next graph, there is a lot of text that sort of explains the factors behind it.
You on page four, was that one the total number of housing units? Oh, thank you, yep.
So this, this shows a change in the number of, total number of housing units over decades, over three decades. So between, from, so that 24.3% is from 1980 to 1990, that was the percent increase in number of housing units. In 2018, that 24%. In 2010, it was at 20.6%. Interestingly, in 2020, the percent increase in the number of housing units was only 4.7% between 2010 and 2020. So we haven't seen a lot of increase in the total number of housing units in Bonner County in a decade. Housing occupancy, occupancy status, that basically refers to the total number of, the percentage of occupied housing units and vacant housing units. We later seen in the study what are the reasons for the housing units being vacant and occupied housing units could either be owner occupied or rented occupied. But this, these studies haven't changed a lot over decades. It's sort of remained at 70, 30% or 65, 35% close to that. So next we have the occupancy status that talks about the rent of the occupied and the vacancy, vacant housing units across geographic area in 2021, appearing Bonner County to rest of the cities. So in Bonner County, a lot of the housing units are vacant as compared to cities, except East Hope, which I think is where the number of vacant units are la... The percentage of vacant units are larger than the percentage of vacant units in Bonner County. It seems like Clarkport has, most of the units are occupied in Clarkport. Moving on to the vacancy status. So this data comes from the Census Bureau. And we can see that the major reason for the housing units being vacant is because they are being used for seasonal recreational or occasion use, which means people are here for a certain time and then they, they are either living in Washington or they are living in California, but they have these housing units here which are just being vacant, so they're not available for housing people. The Census defines housing occupancy as being, like occupying the house for a certain number of months in a year. I think I have that somewhere in the next. I haven't said anything in the introduction. Well, I'll give you that data, I don't hear. And we move on to... Also, any of, so this talks about the percentage of units, housing units that are occupied. Out of those housing units, total number of occupied housing units, how many of those are owner occupied and how many of those are rented occupied? So again, that data, that ratio hasn't changed much over the last 10 years, from 2011 to 2021. Housing conditions, age of structures, again, this section is not very relevant to us as Bonner County doesn't have building codes. So we cannot regulate how, how to build structures or we cannot regulate how old, old structures are dilapidated. This section deals with the housing types, the variety of housing types that those geographic areas have, all the cities and counties, including single family dwellings, defenses, multi-family housing, mobile homes, recreational vehicles, providing housing for both permanent and seasonal residence. In Bonner County, we'll look at the graph here to see what those ratios look like. Again, this is a comparison of unincorporated Bonner County with the rest of the cities. And you see here, over along with incorporated Bonner County has the largest percentage of single family dwelling units. Other jurisdictions have a mix of, have a larger mix of other types of units, which could be two units or three, three unit or four unit housing. It seems like Old Town has a significant share of mobile home units. Andre seems to have the most variety of units in their housing. So this section deals with the housing density and distribution, which basically, which is basically a calculation of how many dwelling units are there per acre of land, Bonner County and other jurisdictions, yes, the graph. So Bonner County is at 28 dwelling units per acre, and this is excluding all the federal land or state land that we have in Bonner County. After that, of the cities, Hope has 63 dwelling units per acre. And Point has, has the highest, which is 1,005 dwelling units per acre. First square mile, I'm sorry.
There's no way.
It's not, no, that'd be very tall.
Yeah.
Or very deep.
First square mile.
Yeah, first square mile. And I would like, so this was the, this graph was approved by the zoning commission, but it has a typo in there, and I would like the group to allow me to correct that typo, which says East Hope had 63 units per square mile, it's actually just four, it's not East Hope.
I support you changing that correction, if it's accurate.
Okay, it's a minor change, it's not big.
Scrivener's error.
Yes, one of them.
Yeah, 63 units per square mile, that'd be one every 10 acres.
Pretty close.
You had all the, all the numbers and tables from where this was pulled out as a new appendix of the, of the component. This data was taken from the assessors' office in February of 2023, when this component was being updated or worked on. These are the percentage of tax exemptions that we have in Bonner County, on Bonner County properties, unincorporated Bonner County to be exact. So forest land and agricultural exemptions here, they are not excluding these two. There are some properties in Bonner County that have both, which is a less than, maybe around 2% of these in Bonner County. And there are a lot of homeowner exemptions, there are, there are significant number of forest land exemptions, there are a small percentage of agricultural exemptions in Bonner County. So this basically reflects what the properties, the assessors' data reflects what the properties are being used as currently in real life, not, not taken from, not data taken from any federal agency that we cannot go relate to. This is on ground data. Housing cost as a percentage of household income. So this... So this graph basically shows how much people are spending on the housing cost in relation to their household income. Usually, if people spend anything more than 30% on the housing cost, it's supposed to be a, it's considered a burden, or rent is considered a burden on the people. So we can see here, so all the, all the area that is still gray here, the bars that are gray here, this wouldn't, wouldn't be a rent burden, but everything over, over that would be a rent burden. So approximately 40% of the people in Bonner County are paying more than they can afford. Yeah, sorry, that was mortgage cost and the other, the next one is rent. So mortgage cost, people are paying, approximately 40% of the people in Bonner County are paying more than they can afford.
Similar.
Similar, yes. Yeah, the cross trend is similar to what we saw earlier. The session deals with sale prices affordability. And then this, this data was taken from multiple listing service. It shows that over the last five years, as the median prices have increased, median sale prices have increased, the number of homes, single family homes that have been sold have decreased over that.
And only on properties over half acres or...
Parcels sizes, parcs sizes larger than point maybe. One of the reasons for putting the data like this for parcels over half acres was the commissioners, the planning commissioners, thought that most of their parcels that are over half acres would likely be in Bonner County. So that would get us close to unincorporated Bonner County as compared to the, all of the county, which in these cities wouldn't give us an accurate information, presentation of what the housing situation is like. Okay, this is a graph that shows vacant land sales for parcels that are over 5.5 acres and parcels that are less than 5.5 acres. It shows both the, in relation to, it shows the... It shows the sale price in relation to the number of sold vacant land. Green relates to green, blue relates to blue. And as we can see, the number of parcels sold went down as the number of, as the prices increased. That's true for both parcels, less than five acre, 5 acres in size and those that are more than 5 acres in size. This is a similar graph that talks, that shows about, that shows parcels in acres and the number of parcels sold, between 4 to 6 acres, or 8 to 12 acres, or 19 to 21 acres. Similar graph that shows the relation between the sale prices and the number of parcels sold. And this graph here talks about the affordability of a median income household. Down here on the, on the X axis, you will see the mortgage rates of interest for a 30-year fixed rate loan. The reason for taking it from 3% or calculating it from 3% to 10% is because it always varies from month to month. You could probably 4% today, 5% tomorrow, and so on. And then, on the left, you see what would be the median income household that earns around, around $55,000. What would they be able to afford if these were the mortgage rates? And there are certain assumptions that follow, that have been taken into consideration to be able to come up with this graph. The assumptions are, one of, one of the assumptions is that we are calculating this for a median income household, that is, most of the people in this county are earning around $55,000, or that's, that's the median, like...
50% or below, 50% or above.
Right, absolutely. The government type of loan that has, has been assumed is a 30-year fixed rate loan. Mortgage insurance premium is dependent on the amount of down payment. So we took that to be about 5%. At least people are able to pay at least 5% of down payment, or they, they try to because anything below, if they're not able to afford even 5% of the amount, people, people don't usually qualify for a loan, nobody wants to lend them money. Home insurance is assumed at $12,000 a year, and property taxes are generally 5% of the purchase price. This potential loan amount has been calculated by deducting the mortgage insurance premium, home insurance and property taxes from the principal amount. For, for the purpose of this exercise, maintenance cost has been assumed to be zero. And there are other factors in getting loans, home loans, that affect the person's ability to get a loan, or how much loan they can get, which are having other loans such as education or car loans and so forth, and credit scores. So we can see here, like about now, it's close to 7% the mortgage rate of interest for a 30-year fixed rate loan. So in, in today's world, in Bonner County, if somebody had a million household income, the mortgage insurance rate is 7%, they would be able to afford something less than $200,000 of this. Whether it could be a home or a land, or that's, that's what, that's all they would be able to afford. We don't have very much... If we look at the median income, median land prices, median land for, median sale prices for vacant land, which shows they are, they are higher than $200,000. So poses a big problem for affordability in Bonner County. This is the data from the planning department, the number of building locations that were processed in 2019 or 2022. As a note, these numbers include all permits that may have been abandoned or denied or not finalized yet. So this number could be a little, the actual number of the houses that have been built using building location permits might be lower than what it actually shows on the graph here. So in blue, we can see the number of dwelling units, that were single family dwelling units that were approved from 2019 to 2022. Red shows accessory dwelling units and green shows RV dwelling units. And these lines here, they show percent change in the number of dwelling units or accessory dwelling units or RV dwelling units from the previous year. So in 2021, we saw peak rise in the number of accessory dwelling units that were requested in Bonner County. There was some increase in the, sorry, there was a peak in the RV dwelling units, and there was some increase in the accessory dwelling units as well. So was there a small increase in the single family dwelling units? It seems in 2022, it has declined. All three of them have declined. This chapter basically then lists all the things that, that come out of this research, which is rapid increases in housing prices due to population growth and second home buyers has made it difficult for employers and employees to find adequate housing. There are, there is a, there is a potential problem that, that we face because of the, because of the company being in this spot, which have, which means there are a lot of second home buyers, which who don't necessarily live here. And they, and there's a bitch that we have a lot of vacancy of housing. There is a shortage of employee housing for sure. You know, lot sizes should be lowered. And there are no affordable housing incentives in Bonner County. Group housing provisions should be added to the code. So these were some of the suggestions, and they still remain valid. We have, we have, so there's Bonner County Community Housing Agency that has operated in Bonner County for some time now, but it's not very active. They may be, like, they may be helping, maybe one or two houses a year, which is not a lot. Provisions of safe sanitary and adequate housing, again, we, we don't have building regulations in Bonner County, so a lot of it cannot be addressed. Some of the things that we still do are the stormwater erosion control measures, getting acquired districts to sign up on the BLBs. Location of, location within flood hazard areas, if people are going to build in flood hazard areas, they should get flood development permits. These are there. Then just an explanation of what flood gates, flood plain standards we use, what are the fire safety regulations. Fair housing compliance, we... We, we don't really take the grants for fair housing compliance as of now, from that. But we still do things in Bonner County that, that may be compatible with, with the act in general. Like having small lots or multifamily parcels, allowing manufactured homes. There are low minimum house sizes in Bonner County, allowing for group homes or accessory dwelling units, mixed uses, having lower parking standards, flexibility on non-conforming structures and other incentives. So these are all the things that would help us get grants for the act if we ever chose to do that. We don't have, we don't do that as of now. Conclusions is basically a chapter of the entire chapter. We move over some graphs at the end of the chapter. So all the...
Well, much of the appendices actually correspond with the tables that you just went over.
All of it.
I'm not sure what those maps are.
So these maps are, they, these maps have been derived from the assessors' data. So because maps are, these, these maps have been derived from the assessors data from twenty twenty, February twenty twenty two, that I was just talking about. But all of these tables correspond to all the texts or the graphs that's in, in the section. So the first the first graph that we have here probably may not be very visible, but lightly here are the state lands. And the darker green here are the federal lands in Bonne County, and the area that you see white is all the private land owned by property owners. So this graph shows agricultural parcels with agricultural exemptions in Bonne County. And this is more reflective of what actually exists on the, on land. Like how much of the land are people are using for agricultural purposes as opposed to getting data from federal agencies which may only go into Bonne County. This is a graph that shows forestland exemptions in Bonne County, again, this is a, it was a large area. This map shows the overlap between the agricultural exemptions and forestland exemptions, so the areas that you see in purple here are the overlaps of forestland and agricultural exemptions. It's not a whole lot of them on, but there is some. And this map here shows the homeowner exemptions in Bonne County, which is a large part of it. This map here shows properties in Bonne County that have been assessed, that are assessed as residential properties. Either with existing residential improvements or potential residential improvements. So all the properties that you see in green, they have existing residential improvements on them. The properties that are in blue are the potential, are the properties that are residential, but can have potential residential improvements on them. And that could be, that's, and I have, do you have any questions?
Were there any material changes from the June, this is the June sixth one versus, I only read the June sixth one, I did not read the April one. Is there anything material that I need to be aware of?
So we met up with the June sixth graph, so we should be okay there.
Okay.
All the, all the important changes that might have been between April and June are covered with this.
Minus you taking out the word east.
Yes.
Thank goodness. When is our hearing scheduled?
January sixth of July.
Couple of weeks.
I don't know what affordable house would look like now.
Pretty.
In County.
Yeah.
Be little, I guess.
Well.
A lot about, well, be wide.
The dirt they can afford is going to be pretty small as well.
Yeah, it's a definitely weird dynamics the last thirty years.
Are we all finished?
Well, already then, then it is three forty and seventeen seconds.